This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Business Meeting for December 18th, 2018. To begin this evening, as our usual custom, we offer the opportunity for public participation. Any members of the public that are here in attendance are welcome to address the board, either with a question or a comment. It can be on any matter. It does not have to be a matter that's on the agenda. We ask that you raise your hand and be recognized. We'll ask you to step to the podium. Please give us your name and address and hold your comment time to approximately three minutes. If you'd like to ask a question of the board for an answer to be provided at a later time, over on the table inside the door entry there, there are cards and pencils and pens and you're welcome to leave us an inquiry and we will get back to you. So, is there anyone here this evening that would like to address the board? Okay, seeing that we have none this evening, we have guests and we're welcome. We welcome all of you, but we will move on then. May we have approval of our agenda this evening?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Christina, was it?
No.
Oh, Andrea, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. A motion, please, for approval of minutes for the December 27th education meeting and a December 3rd special meeting.
Second.
Moved by Julian, seconded by Karen. Does anybody have any additions or corrections or deletions from those minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next up, we have this evening a presentation from one of our student groups, the Climate Club. And is someone going to, I should have asked this ahead of time, is someone going to introduce the group formally or are we welcoming them as a group this evening?
We are welcoming the Climate Club and they're going to introduce themselves.
Fantastic. Welcome, Climate Club representatives. I will preface this briefly for those that may be watching at home. The Brighton High School Climate Club has written the Board of Education on a number of occasions with regard to a number of topical issues that they're going to talk about here shortly, and we welcome their input and had asked for an opportunity to address the board in some detail, and so that's why they're here this evening. So, welcome folks. Please introduce yourselves to us also.
Thank you. Hi guys, my name is Fredaisha Singh and we are the leadership team for Brighton High School's Climate Club. And my fellow leaders here to present to the board today are Liam Smith and Ailis Spiller. And we just first wanted to, we just first really want to thank you for the efforts that you Brighton High School and Brighton Central School District as a district together has done. Thank you again for your work on the Environmental Committee as well as the Zero Waste Initiative that has been implemented throughout K through 12. Thank you to our Brighton High School School Administration for working with us to implement last year's Earth Day Rally, which saw the attendance of over 100 community members in Brighton. Thank you to the Council Rock for adopting a whale and thank you so much again for meeting with us today and taking a time out of your busy schedule to do that. And why are we here today? So, as you all already know, climate change is a generational issue and this issue affects youth at a disproportionate rate than it does to the current generation. And we are asking the Brighton Central School District today to develop a district-wide climate action plan in order to address our greenhouse gas emissions in our schools. And additionally, we are seeking an endorsement from this body to support carbon fee and dividend and encourage our current Congressman Joe Morelli to join the House Climate Solutions Caucus. And these two points we will address later on in our PowerPoint. So, what would a climate action plan entail? And I'm going to turn it over to my fellow leader Liam to explain this more, Ailis to explain this more in detail.
Okay. So, we as a student body representing the high school population are asking that the district craft and establish a climate action plan for the schools. We already have the Zero Waste Initiative, but now we want something that is going to address specifically greenhouse gas emissions and other environmental impacts. So, what would a climate action plan or cap entail? That would be a written plan outlining a change or modification in utilities, usage of those utilities, and the educational curriculum to reduce our emissions and to promote sustainable practices. Also, we would like for an analysis of the district's uses and emissions now and after changes would be implemented to be executed. So, utilities would include things like heating and lighting, maintenance, construction, usage of those utilities, using the buses, using that equipment, et cetera. Now, to the educational component, like the Zero Waste Initiative which started in Council Rock, then FRES, then TCMS, and up into the high school, we want the educational component to go K through 12 so that students going through Brighton and who live in the Brighton community and go through the Brighton schools have a comprehensive and extensive education about what this issue is, what is climate change, how are humans impacting our environment and how is that specific and relevant to the Brighton community? So, start when they're younger, just emphasize that this is an issue and what is it? And as you get older, kind of understand the science behind it and understand why the district is making these changes and acting as a role model for others in the community and nearby school districts and nearby institutions. And with that comes along networking. If making a climate action plan is something that is a big deal, it's a big commitment, but it's something that our district has the resources to do and has the community support to do. And this would be good for the Brighton community, for Brighton students, and for the Rochester area as a whole.
All right. So, on one hand, we would like our school district to do more on a local level to address climate change, but we're also asking you to do more to build support for climate policy on the national level because right now Congress needs some pushing. They're still not right, they haven't passed any significant climate change legislation. And so, we're going to people like you, local leaders, to ask you to help convince them to do more to solve climate change. So, the policy we're asking you to endorse is called Carbon Fee and Dividend. It's a three-step proposal and climatists and economists alike agree that it's the best policy that we can take, it's the best first step we can take to stop climate change. So, the first step is to place a fee in fossil fuels at the source point. So, that would be the mine, the well, or the port of entry into our economy. This plan starts with a moderate fee of $15 per ton of CO2 equivalent and increases by $10 per ton per year. Essentially, it's just a clear market signal. As the carbon and fossil fuels become more expensive, people will be incentivized to use less fossil fuels. So, renewable energy like solar, wind, hydro, those become less expensive and more cost-effective. So, the idea is that people would start to use those more. The second piece of this proposal is called a dividend. So, we return all the revenue to households in the form of an equal per capita check. So, every month you get a check in the mail that has an equal part of this dividend. And the idea behind the dividend is that it would offset the increased cost of living due to fossil fuels. So, people living, the poor and the lower income classes, they would not be affected negatively by this proposal. And then, the third part of Carbon Fee and Dividend is called a border adjustment. This adjustment basically just discourages businesses from relocating to where they can emit more CO2 and it encourages other nations to adopt a similar price on carbon. And that's entirely the goal of Carbon Fee and Dividend. It's just to encourage the whole world to transition to a clean energy economy. All right. So, what will the effects of Carbon Fee and Dividend be? Well, in 2014, Regional Economic Models conducted a study on this very policy. And their study detailed the effects of Carbon Fee and Dividend into four major areas. The first is emissions. They found that emissions peaked and turned downward. So, in 10 years, they'd be reduced to 31% below 1990 levels. 20 years, that becomes 50%. And keep in mind, that's 1990 levels. If you look at current 2018 levels, it's a lot more, obviously, we're emitting more carbon dioxide now than we were then. So, the reductions would be a greater percentage. All right. In terms of the economy, the dividend kind of just acts like a stimulus. It's like the Obama or Bush era stimulus packages. When you have this money in your pocket, you want to spend it, so in places like retail. So, it creates over 2.8 million jobs in 20 years and it would also result in a projected increase of $1.375 trillion to GDP over that same 20-year period. Also, local government operations would be affected by climate change. So, like if you're cleaning up disasters, that kind of thing. So, by addressing climate change, we would also reduce taxes associated with paying for the increased costs of cleaning up what we've caused. And the third part would be our health. They found that with fewer greenhouse gas emissions, we have less air pollution and we have less deaths caused by air pollution. They found that 227,000 premature deaths would be prevented over the 20-year period by this policy. And finally, our income, since that fee increases steadily, the dividend would also increase steadily for a time. So, a family of four would receive $288 per month after 10 years, $396 per month after 20 years. The important thing about this dividend is that it would offset the increased cost of fossil fuels. So, this study found that 60 to 70% of households would break even or receive more money from the dividend than the increased cost of living. So, essentially, there's not really a good economic argument against Carbon Fee and Dividend. It's good for our economy, it's good for our health, and it addresses the issue at hand, which is climate change. It reduces greenhouse gas emissions. And finally, what have we done so far? Well, we obviously don't have Carbon Fee and Dividend right now, but we have seen some progress in our government. This graphic up here shows the Climate Solutions Caucus. It's a bipartisan working group in the House of Representatives that's dedicated to solving climate change. They started in 2014 and they're already up to 90 members. That's 45 Republicans and 45 Democrats dedicated to solving climate change and dedicating to working together because this cannot be a partisan issue as it has been in the past. And so, they have yet to put forth a, they have yet to like get anything through the House, but this is the group that we foresee real action coming from. In other nations, we have Canada, they actually passed what's called the Greenhouse Gas Pollution Pricing Act, and that's essentially a Carbon Fee and Dividend. So, that just shows that Carbon Fee and Dividend has been considered by other nations and it's actually been put in place by Canada.
So, why do we come to seek support from the school board? Again, action begins at the grassroots. And as some of the only members within government that directly represent students and youth such as myself and my fellow leaders, you are both connected to us and since climate change is a generational issue and it's going to disproportionately affect youth the most, you have the most power to prevent that and to teach the next generation about the impact that it has through education, through literacy, to prevent and to mitigate these effects. Again, through education of climate change and climate solutions, we can educate the next generation of leaders to help shift the debate around climate change to a more solutions-based. And in addition to help further mitigate these effects and to preserve our future as an equal right that we have right now.
All right. So, we're asking our school district to do a lot. It's a big ask to ask you to create a climate action plan and it's also a big ask to ask you to endorse a federal policy, but we know we have a district that can do this. We put in place the Zero Waste Initiative a few years back and we've already seen other school districts adopting similar things. I think Hilton, I think it was the whole Ontario County Schools also have put in place composting. So, we can really be a leader in sustainability and that's what the Climate Club is asking you to do. All right. And we, just to review what we're asking for, we're asking you, one, to create a climate action plan, two, to pass Carbon Fee and Dividend, to encourage Congress to pass Carbon Fee and Dividend legislation, and then the third part is to ask our member of Congress to join the Climate Solutions Caucus so that Representative Morelli can do more to address climate change. In regards to the climate action plan, it would kind of formalize what the Environmental Committee has already been doing. They seem pretty excited to get some more guidance on what they can do. And so, that's a, and they also are, there are several members of the committee who work with Impact Earth, Cassidy and Sarah, I believe, and they've worked on climate action plans for municipalities in the past. So, we have some people who can help write the actual language for the climate action plan because we can't actually write that. We have some suggestions in the climate resolution we sent you, but we're asking the Environmental Committee, in particular, those members of Impact Earth who seem excited to help out, we're asking them to create the actual language for a climate action plan and to create the benchmarks that we would hope to achieve. And finally, we have a petition. We have 182 students and community members and teachers who have signed this petition in support of our climate resolution. I'll hand these to you. I also have some online, but I didn't print them out, so I'll email them out later tonight. Who should I?
If you'd just give them to our board clerk, Mrs. Ladd's fame right here, and she'll make sure we get copies of it.
All right.
Copy to us. Thank you.
So, again, thank you so much for listening to us and thank you for taking so much time out of your busy schedule. Brighton is a trendsetter within the Rochester community and by taking a step forward and to combating climate change at the local level, we can take the first step and become a trendsetter within the climate mitigation in the local area. And I firmly believe that lots of times when you think about climate change, you think about, oh wow, this is such a huge issue. How can one individual or as a community combat this? But it all starts with a local level and by taking steps right here today to pass this climate resolution, we can mitigate those effects and we can reduce our carbon emissions as a community.
Thank you to educate about that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you. Thank all of you for coming tonight and especially thanks to all of those other students that are with you, not only Climate Club, but certainly Environmental Committee, the Environmental Club, all those involved in Zero Waste. You know, I do think we are leaders and certainly you young people, your generation and those generations to follow you are going to have to figure this out entirely, right? And our generation's going to have to do all that we can right now in the next few years to put us on a better path. I think we would all would agree with that. You've given us a lot of material and you've sent us material previously. We've already begun discussing some of the material, but I would tell you this evening that everything you've supplied to us in the presentation that we had ahead of time gave us an opportunity to take a look and we'll take everything under advisement. We will discuss some of the elements, some of the elements that you touch on do play into our facilities, K-12 facilities plan, for example, that is right in process right at the moment, and some elements of that, you know, would be affected and positively by some of the material that you've shared with us. So, we appreciate your efforts and we encourage you to sustain those and we will, at a later date, be able to report out better exactly where we are and what we're able to do and what elements of it might not fit either with our purview or with what the district is able to do, given financial resources too. But thank you very much for all that you've done and all the work they've put into this. So, we appreciate it.
Great job. Awesome.
Okay, again, yeah, I think that we could do it in the morning. Next up tonight, we have another presentation from Carolyn Rafferty on our Students Support Services Program, an update in that regard. So, Carolyn, welcome and thank you.
Okay, that's very, very unfair. I was whispering to people to follow these professionals. That are, an incredible presentation, really incredible. I only present once a year and I have to follow you guys. I'm not sure about that. All right. Let's.
We appreciate all that you do too, Carolyn, and thank you very much for the.
Okay, well, here I am. I can't believe it. It is, this is my seventh year, finishing my seventh year, seven presentations and talking about what happens in the Student Services Office. Time really flies by. And every year, I invite faculty to highlight various programs around the district. In the past, you've seen presentations by the Best Buddies Club, the St. John Fisher Transition Program, the BHS Coffee Cart, the Special Education, PTSA Coffee Hours, just to name a few. And this year, as promised at my last presentation, you're going to get a more detailed look at our implementation of Second Step and the role of our Family Navigator. But first, I will start the presentation with my yearly summary of the Special Education by the Numbers. Who are our students in Brighton? The number of classified students in Brighton has been stable over several years. You can see the numbers and in the parentheses, that is our range over the last five years. We consistently have students identified across many areas of disabilities, with our highest number of classification is also consistent over time with that being learning disability and other health impairments. Again, you can see our numbers from this year and then the last five years. We also continue to place students in several areas outside of the Brighton Four Walls. Over the last five years, we've had between 40 and 46 students or 1.3% in programs outside of the Four Walls of Brighton. Students may be placed in another program for a variety of reasons that include safety concerns, the severity of a student's disability, or a student with a specific type of disability or learning challenge that we may just not be able to meet those challenges here in our district classrooms. They can be placed in a variety of settings that include but are not limited to the BOSI's Programs, the Norman Howard School, and the School of the Holy Childhood. Again, the numbers in parentheses are those ranges over the last five years. Brighton services 10 private schools and these are the private schools that we also have to oversee all of special education. The number of classified students in these schools has shown a steady increase, slightly higher this year, and has been creeping up steadily. And that is because private schools are becoming more willing to enroll students with academic and behavioral challenges, so we have to provide more special education services to those schools. We currently have one full-time school psychologist and 3.2 special education teachers to service the 10 buildings, but that's not even enough. In addition, we contract with BOSI's for additional special education teachers and service providers, speech therapists, OTs, PTs, counselors. We have a huge service agreement with BOSI's to push into those schools. We service all the classified students in these buildings regardless of their district of residence. If a student is in one of the 10 schools that needs special education, it's our responsibility to provide that service. It's important to note, however, that the Students' District of Residence is financially responsible for that student's programming. So, we run the CSEs and any private schools in any of the other towns, if we have Brighton students there, they run the CSEs for those private schools and then we pay for our own students in those schools. You'll also notice that the most prevalent classifications in the private schools are learning disability and other health impairments. Our focus continues to be on how to create inclusive environments in all of our classrooms. The question remains, how do we continue to build a Brighton culture that embraces all students' learning styles and supports all students' social and emotional development? And if you look at that picture, you can see, how do we do that? How do we get everybody to see over the fence? How do we get everybody to where they need to be? How do we help each other? How do we build those inclusive environments, taking collective responsibility, trust, cooperation, and collaboration? And tonight, we have our special guests, Katera Reed, Kim Ball, and Kristin Hawey, I'm going to get that right this time, are all here to tell you about the new initiatives that support the building, to support our buildings and inclusive environments.
I'm Kimberly Ball. I'm one of the school counselors at Council Rock.
And I'm Katera Reed. I'm a part-time school counselor at Council.
So, as many of you know, we had an outside consultant come in and review our mental health services that we have in the district. And one kind of overarching theme in their recommendations was to take a look at providing some sort of preventative and proactive social-emotional learning program that be available for all students. So, looking at kind of getting ahead of things and being more proactive than reactionary. So, the Mental Health Steering Committee took some time to look at programs that were available and we ended up landing on Second Step, which is a really well-packaged, comprehensive program for social-emotional learning for students. Right now, we are in the full swings of implementing the program at Council Rock and French Road and the Mental Health Steering Committee is in the process of getting it up and running by mid-year, hopefully, at the middle school. Katera, we've been really lucky to hire her over the summer to start at Council Rock this year. She has implemented this program before and has been crucial in kind of getting it running for us in the building and since she is very familiar with the program, is going to give us a little inside look at what the curriculum really encompasses.
So, I'm just going to give you a general idea of the reason for the social-emotional curriculum. Really, what Second Step is trying to do is promote school success, school connectedness, and a safe and respectful school climate. And one awesome thing that we've been able to do is not all school districts can implement this building-wide and we've been able to do that. Obviously, we're talking K-2 perspective and it's being implemented K-5 at this moment, hopefully, to TCMS soon. But we've had the opportunity to reach every classroom within our building, so every student is getting the Second Step lessons. They're all learning these different topics and really, it helps to students strengthen their ability to learn. There's a unit called Skills for Learning. There's empathy, we focus on empathy, that's our current unit. Emotion management and problem solving, so just a couple of things that are a part of those units is, so the Skills for Learning focuses on assertiveness, learning self-talk, how it can be used to help be a better learner, listening, listening rules. And for the empathy unit, we really focus on how to look for the clues about how someone is feeling and how to show compassion and care for those people when we notice that they're feeling down or sad or whatever it might be. Emotion management is really focused on that more internal perspective or awareness of how am I feeling in this very moment? And problem solving, that's pretty self-explanatory, is solving those problems, how to learn how to solve problems on their own or with their friends in those moments when they might be experiencing some sort of issue. So, yeah, and as Kim said, we are K-5 at the moment and expanding to middle school soon. So, what Second Step looks like in the classroom? As I said before, we're in the classroom one time per cycle to each and every classroom. It starts with a warm-up, so we always do a review of what we've learned last time just to get a better idea of where we might need to really focus and continue our conversations. And then, we do a brain builder, which is, it's a game, but it's a part of whatever topic we might be talking about. There are brain builders called listening and concentration, basically Simon says, what is called follow-follow, again, to promote that, those listening skills. And then, we move into a story and discussion. So, each lesson comes with a picture, which Kim is holding up now.
This is an example of one of the visuals. Every lesson does have some sort of visual or photo card that comes along with it for us to be able to display. For the children, there's also some technology associated, some of the pictures come so we can show them on the smart boards and some of them have some quick video clips that we can show ahead of time or during the lesson as well. So, this is an example of one of the, from using self-talk from the second grade unit that we have. And we also, along the way, I know Katera's going to kind of go through what the lessons look like, and to show you kind of what the kids see when we come into the classrooms. We have also taken time, once per cycle, to plan kind of how we're going to make sure that we're aligning, can we deliver the lessons, to make sure that we are aligned in what we're delivering and if there's anything else that we can do to supplement the lessons. So, we've also used some books. So, I just held up the lesson that is for self-talk. So, we actually read a story to the children before that called "What is a Thought?" to kind of bring their awareness to kind of that cognition to be better understand the concepts that we're then going to talk about in a lesson like that. And as Katera said, right now, we're in the middle of the empathy lesson, or unit, sorry. So, we've done a lot of work with children on understanding, putting yourself in other person's shoes, so really kind of diving into not only what does empathy look like, but how can we use that in our everyday life? So, this is another example of a story that we've used to kind of supplement those visuals that go along with the lessons.
And we didn't bring them, but we should note that Kim provided five pairs of shoes for us to bring the.
It's fun to watch them laugh at me when I'm trying to really put someone else's shoes on. Mrs. Ball, that's not what it means. I'm thinking about how they're feeling, not putting their shoes on. It's cute.
So the, the story cards are great because, again, it provides a visual and a story to jumpstart and, and jumpstart a discussion, but it's, we've really tried to, other things, including the books and some videos, some drawing activities, some games, to try to target those, those kiddos who learn in different ways and just, again, enhance their learning. So, so we always do something like the story and discussion, and we may supplement. And then we do, well, I guess that would be the skill practice, is that supplementation or activity of whatever kind. And then we do a wrap-up, which again is basically a reflection of what we've done throughout the lesson, and that's pretty much it. So that's each lesson in a nutshell. And so we have some plans for how we're gonna collect data to see how it's going. And so we have, we did this for the end of Unit One. We did an end-of-unit review with the kiddos, so we came up with questions to ask each classroom. They all get the same questions. I record Kim's classes, Kim records my classes, and we ask these questions, and we record how many hands are raised for whatever question it might be. So we're doing that for each unit. We're also planning an end-of-year teacher survey, and we are going to sit down with teachers in a few weeks, hopefully, after break, and talk with them about how it's going, how kiddos are using the skills that we're teaching them in the classroom, what they're seeing, and how we may be able to improve.
The great part is that our teachers stay in the room while we're delivering these lessons. They really value the messages that the lessons are delivering to the students, and I hear a lot about conversations that they continue to have with the students in between the lessons. We're not always there with them like their teachers are, so to be able to hear about kind of the way that they're reinforcing the message or reflecting back with the students on something that we've come in and talked about has been really nice to hear too.
So that's Second Step in a nutshell. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
My name is Kristin Hawey, and I am the Family Navigator here at Brighton Schools. So I have been here since the beginning of the year, on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, and I'm from an organization called Delphi Rise, formerly known as Delphi Drug and Alcohol Council. Maybe some of you guys have heard of that. They provide a wide variety of services, but including prevention in all schools in Wayne County and Brockport Gates, now Brighton, and Penfield. So I am helping to facilitate the referrals between Genesee Mental Health and other community agencies, and also working as a school-based prevention counselor, both at the middle school and the high school. So I'm working individually with students who have been referred for high-risk behaviors, concerns of substance use, family substance use, or other family and personal problems. And also working with kids who have difficulty accessing any kind of supports due to insurance barriers. So then we have, from Genesee Mental Health, we have Suellen Tremble, who's at TCMS on Mondays, and Brian Head, who is at the high school on Tuesdays. So they're working one-on-one with students, providing mental health counseling for a variety of mental health reasons. They also do evaluations on depression scales or suicide scales, and are also able to hook up services for kids through psychiatric evaluations through GMH, which I'll tell you a story about later, it was really, really cool what happened with one of our kids at Brighton High School. So our referrals so far this year. So for Genesee Mental Health, for Brian Head at the high school, he's had sixteen referrals, and then seven through the middle school. Through Delphi Rise, myself, being able to see kids at school, seventeen referrals through the high school, and four referrals at the middle school. So for kids accessing services for Genesee Mental Health, they are identified by their school counselors, who reach out to the families and let them know that we have somebody who's in the school that can meet the kids right in the school building during the day. After they are identified, I'll reach out to the families, let them know a little bit more about the services and what's all entailed, and how the next steps in the referral process go. Send out the HIPAA consent form, which they need to sign in order to be able to be seen at school, and then refer them on to Suellen or Brian for their intake and for GMH to collect their insurance information and set up that intake, which can either be done at the school, or they can go down to Alexander Street to complete that intake there. So really, a lot of help for families in meeting them where they're at. For myself, counselors have been referring students to me, and all they need to do is fill out a referral form, and I'm able to see those students. So under Oasis regulations, confidentiality is a little bit different, so it doesn't need consent from families, nor does it go through insurance. So it's just a really, really great thing to have for kids who are seeking services, who might have insurance barriers or want to be seen confidentially. So that's what our services look like. So we've seen, obviously, a lot of positive outcomes of having these kids be able to be seen right at school. So we got rid of any transportation barriers that might happen in the families, as kids can be seen right at school. Some financial barriers that are taken away. We actually had one student who was able to, Brian was able to hook them up with services by going through financial aid services through GMH, and would have never been able to be seen that quickly and jump through so many hoops in order to get that service. And like I said before, the confidentiality barrier of kids just being able to seek treatment on their own, and those insurance barriers. So the story about one of our seniors, a current senior, who the school had tried in a lot of different ways to get her a psychiatric evaluation, through different people, through different organizations, and the parents just weren't able to make that happen for her, for a lot of different reasons. She was referred to Genesee Mental Health, and when Brian met with her, fast-tracked her right away, got her a psych evaluation within a week, and she had medication that same day. So just that fast-tracked ability to get her the help that she really, really greatly needed. She transitioned to the AIM program, and from what I have been hearing, she's been pretty successful there. So the counselors are extremely grateful to have other people to refer to in the building, especially some of their frequent flyers, and just to have the support of extra three mental health staff within the district. So it's really, really awesome.
Fantastic. Kristin, could I ask you a question quickly?
Yeah.
I don't want to interrupt the applause, I'm sorry. I wonder, and again, this is such a fantastic report out, and we've talked to Carolyn about this, and we've had this information, I think all of us in the school community are so happy to be able to provide and have onsite what you described today, and look forward to the next levels and next steps, and, and see how we're interacting with kids and families. I, I wonder about the community at large. Are we doing better in the community providing services? In other words, referrals that need to go out beyond to individual providers, be they mental health, medical health, social-emotional addiction? Are we getting better as a greater Rochester community in having service providers and beds and spaces? Is that improving?
Yes.
Okay.
It is. Specifically, I can speak probably a little bit more to adults. Delphi has recently worked with other organizations who provide drug and alcohol treatment, and opened up what they call the Open Access, which is open 24 hours, and they believe adolescents can go to, to receive services. So they can access that 24 hours a day, and some people are getting into beds, like rehab beds, within 24 hours, which is amazing, almost unheard of. So certainly, there is a community push, especially because of the opiate epidemic, for that stuff to be happening. As far as referrals to other agencies, for sure, I have to commend the counseling teams at those schools. Working with the counselors who are there, they are super professional and full of knowledge, and just seeing that the work that they do and providing referrals themselves for these families is really, really awesome. I've worked in a lot of districts. This is a really, really great one.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, and thank you for your work. Thank you to all for the report out this evening on all those elements of our student services program. Moving on to our reports section this evening, financial reports, we have from Lou and Dahlia, the executive summary budget status report, along with the treasurer's report. We have a motion to receive and accept those reports, please.
So move.
Second.
Does anyone have anything, questions or anything further on that? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Our student representative report. Hello, welcome.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. How are you all doing tonight?
Good.
Yeah, it's a little chilly outside, I know.
It's chilly in here.
It's true. Yeah. We're kind of getting to that time of year, I feel like. So with the students, we're all so cold, but it's about the middle of the second quarter, and, you know, Christmas break is approaching, so everyone's kind of getting ready for that. And in the spirit of that, I think students are finally starting to really get into their schedules, and everything seems to be moving pretty smoothly at the high school. Some of the things that I want to bring up, one of them is the meeting that we actually had today with Dr. Hall and some other leaders of different clubs at our school. It's fresh on my mind, so I wanted to mention that. We just wanted to improve some of the circumstances that are going on with like clubs, and make sure people have good access to them, and eliminate some of the stigma around clubs and just who can be members of what clubs, and like, for example, like Muslim Student Association, they feel like there's a stigma around that only Muslim students can be a part of it, but we really want to start incorporating more diversity in all of our clubs and get everyone on like the same page for improving clubs in general and not just sort of creating more of a division with it than there already is. So we kind of worked on like getting feedback for those, and one of the things that came up was a lot of the racial disparity that some people are feeling recently with like punishments, and also just treatment in general at school. Black Student, or Black Student Union actually brought up that, like, they had a statistic, which I can't remember at this point, but it was a statistic about the disparity between punishments for blacks, or no, 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 you know what it was? It was, I think it was students at Brighton, and then there were two other schools that black students were nine times more likely to get suspended than white students. So we were talking about that a little bit. We were also talking about how students of color feel like they're just being treated differently, like, in general, like in the hallways. They feel like students of color are being more consistently asked if they're meant to be somewhere else, or if they're doing what they're supposed to be, and like they're being closely watched more than white students. So we talked about that a little bit, which wasn't actually the point of the meeting, but I thought it was an important conversation for us all to have, so I'm glad that that got to be brought up. And I know Dr. Hall said that that was gonna be discussed privately, more in depth, so that we could focus more on that. But it was nice, because everybody got to bring up some of the issues that they felt was going on with Brighton and clubs. So I thought that was a pretty important part of the school day today, but also just the school year in general, and moving forward and improving our academic life for students. Another exciting thing is we got our Brighton Believes, or Blue Ribbon Award the other day, so we have that hanging up outside the office now, and everyone was really excited about that. We heard some very touching speeches, which I thought held a lot of truth about Brighton and what it means to be a high schooler at Brighton. And everyone spoke really eloquently about just different attributes of Brighton that they found really helpful to them, and that made them feel like Brighton was a home. And it was very nice to hear that. It was exciting that we got recognized for all of our achievements. And also, Student Senate, a little, I mean, you guys already kind of know about this because of the Climate Club presentation that you just saw, but one of the 182 students, teachers, et cetera, who were in support of this resolution, it was Student Senate, all of Student Senate, passed a resolution in collaboration with Climate Club that encouraged the Board of Education to further discuss the Climate Action Plan that was brought up, which I think is pretty impressive. Everybody was really, I mean, you saw them, they were amazing, but everyone was very on the same page about that, and I thought they did a really good job at presenting all the facts and why we should look more into that. Just in general, I think the era at Brighton is very excited, as a lot of seniors are hearing back from like their early colleges, which is exciting for everyone. And in general, that's sort of how the school is going right now, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the update and the look inside. We appreciate it. Our Board of Education reports from the Monroe County School Boards Association's standing committees, labor relations.
Well, of course.
You know, we're a little out of sync on some of these reports, but that was November 28th was the last report out.
Yeah, and I was on the road, and I agree with us, and Lou was our only representative that was there.
Yeah, that was on field trips.
It was on field trips, yep.
Yes.
And the next meeting is gonna be on January 16th, on sexual harassment regulations, how they've changed, and what does the, does the new, what does the new implementation look like?
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Mark. And Andrea. Information Exchange.
Do you want to do it? Yeah, the next meeting is in January, the 9th, and the Chief Diversity Officer at the College for Brockport will be presenting on cultural responsiveness and how it affects the success of your students.
Yeah, that, oh, November 14th, too, just to make note, because that was the last meeting.
Correct, yeah.
And that was, the only reason I wanted to bring it up again.
Douglas.
Douglas, sorry, Douglas Gerhart, one of our attorneys from Harris Beach, reported out and presented on.
Social media.
Social media attacks and things like this. We wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I was there. That was really good.
We did have a couple of folks at that. And then one note, as Christina said, the January 9th meeting on cultural responsiveness. One of the things that I think you'll find very interesting is the remainder of the Information Exchange sessions that are booked this year heavy on the theme around diversity, equity, and inclusion, with a number of recognized experts from not only this area, but a couple from out of the area. So I think Information Exchange is really focusing on that topical area, because all suburban districts are focusing on that area. So I think it'll be great professional development for all of us as we go forward through the year, too.
I know, I'll be attending that one.
I think we'll have a big crowd that night.
Detective Baker will be joining.
Anticipate. I think they're gonna have, use the big ballroom that night, or that afternoon, so.
It's at noon, right? It's not afternoon?
It's a noon meeting.
Probably one.
Yeah. So, so thank you for that report out on that. Legislative committee.
Well, we spent time, the first week in December, talking about the preparations we were making for our legislative field trip to Albany, which was canceled.
And then we canceled.
We, we discussed at length how the changes, change in power is going to make things a little touch and go for a while, not necessarily in the legislation we expect, but just in how we are interfacing with our representatives. They're all getting their feet under them, switching offices, making new plans, et cetera. And so I have a feeling that we had to cancel because our appointments were changed, and I think that that's the result of the current chaos.
It was one of those things where, it was the one-day trip, where we typically go and we meet with the governor's education staff people, and then also, we meet with different budget and education staff people from the majority and the minority in both the Senate and the House, we also, or the Senate and the Assembly. We also try to meet with State Education Department folks. It just was a, there was a regents meeting, a regents day that was a little bit rescheduled, and a bunch of state ed people were involved, and we had a couple of appointments that had gotten canceled, and it was difficult getting. Everything is such a transition right now because of all the ramifications of the last election, that we ended up thinking it wasn't worth our time.
And I think that's going to be a theme for the year, the ramifications of the shift in power and the election will see us scrambling a little bit this year.
Exactly. So we'll have our two-day trip come up.
March.
A little bit later, in March, and that'll be a little bit, by that time, things will all have settled in, the governor's budget will be out, and we'll be very organized on that. And the other note there also for everybody, that you, you did see a save the date, February 2nd.
Right.
For the legislative breakfast, which this year is at Penfield Country Club. And you'll get an invitation shortly, and the format will be the same as it's been, so if you do want to attend that Saturday morning, when you respond that you're gonna attend, you can put down, you know, Joe Robach or Jamie Frank, Jamie Romeo, I'm sorry.
Is it Penfield?
Yeah.
It was mentioned that Congressman Morelli asked if he could still attend.
He may, Joe, and I said, he's.
That's not, that's not typical.
We're not gonna say no to our congressman, but he may attend, too. So the point is, we are gonna continue to try to assign seats and have. So the point is, we are going to continue to try to assign seats and have table sizes appropriate to the individual representatives so that everybody can get a seat and we don't have to have a scramble for seats and there'll be facilitation at each table. Yeah, what happened is with the fire at Shadow Lake.
Okay, so that's what was on my calendar.
Yeah, Shadow Lake, Penfield Country Club is taking a lot of the events from Shadow Lake until they get fully rebuilt. So, yeah, that's, I understand that's, so. So we will report out further on that as we get a little bit closer. And we do, we are scheduled to meet Legislative Committee right.
January 2nd.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
No rest of the weekend.
They talked about not having that meeting, but I think we need to do it because of the, it's the only meeting before the legislative breakfast.
Before the breakfast.
All right, thank you. And thank you all for attending all those different programs. BOSI's report, Marv.
Well, from our BOSI rep, we, I understand there's going to be a seventh year in a row flat administration and budget, which we will vote on sometime in the future. They're expanding their new vision program for students to join in. And the urban suburban students are going to be affected by some RTS maneuvering, according to Sora, that they're not sure what, how that's going to be, but the schedule, RTS is trying to revamp their schedule, making it more streamlined, I guess. And the Wayne Finger Lakes BOSI superintendent search is coming to an end and I mentioned Dan White will be very happy about that.
He'll be back in one job.
Yeah.
Well, 10 jobs, but, yeah.
Right.
Half.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, Marv. And also, our other board member reports, and we haven't really reported out on this since mid-November, so we'll start at the other end of the table tonight. Christina, do you have anything to report out on your activities?
On the library evaluation, the media committee is meeting January 8th for our next meeting.
Okay.
And at our last meeting, we started working on ways in which we would create surveys.
Okay.
Both quantitative and qualitative.
Okay, great.
So the Foreign Language Review Committee met and we are in the process of going over some New York State standards that have been recently implemented and using those to help us kind of give guidance to counselors and place, just for placement of students, also for families in the community in general. So we spent a lot of time working on that.
Okay, great, thanks. Larry?
So we're undertaking some facilities improvement around here, if you weren't aware.
I heard that.
Yeah, there's a goal to have.
Please.
Full day K, fall of '21.
We will have.
We will have. There is a ton of work going on, obviously things like the track and some visible things that we've seen that are completed on the first projects. There's a ton of work coming to Council Rock and it'll probably start in the February, March timeframe to be very visible. We've done meetings with the neighbors there, which were very helpful to understand their concerns and begin to be able to address or mitigate some of their concerns. Very much focused on safety, making sure things happen safely. Obviously, the keystone of this project is full day K, but there's work coming to the high school, there's work coming to the middle school. It's going to be everywhere for the next few years. And on the other side, we're going to greatly improve schools and even better learning environments, but the road to get there will be a little bit bumpy.
That's a good point. And to interrupt and interject, I guess, the Safety Committee, which I sit on, as you know, we also spent about 45 minutes of our meeting a couple of weeks ago talking about security and safety issues around all of our facilities projects. You know, most of that, of course, is Council Rock, but also French Road has quite a bit going on, more than people realize, and the other two buildings also. And I, I think we've talked about it frequently, but it also highlighted, and I know your meetings highlight, the need for us and we're going to, you'll see right after, the community will see after the first of the year, much more messaging, much more discussion, much, many more updates as we begin to finalize work schedules and bids are awarded so that the entire community is well aware of all of what's going to start over likely a three-ish year period.
Yeah, Lou and Dan have a very robust communication program planned to make sure people are informed. We've had great support from ambulance, police, fire, the town. Everyone sort of is talking all the time, absolute focus on safety, number one, then obviously, number two, maintaining a great educational experience. But there's a ton of work coming.
We're going to make it work and we're going to remind folks, anyone who's ever renovated, we're going to ask them to recall that experience, it's going to be a bit of a mess for a while, but we're going to make it work and we've got people in place and systems in place, so, thank you. Karen, any new?
So most recently, I've attended several sessions of the Family Engagement Subcommittee based on the diversity equity work that we're doing. Just yesterday, I was able to sit with Debbie and teachers and staff and talk about some of the data we've collected around how we're engaging with families. And it's a, it's a hard one to get your, your hands around because we would like to improve how we engage with families who don't access the information or who aren't in communication with us. And finding a way to get to the families that aren't interested in engaging can be, that's a paradoxical kind of ask. But that's interesting work and we have some, some action items I think that we can move on going forward. And then I was able to work with District Environmental Committee last week. I was able to hear students present and talk about how the, the work that that committee is doing has dovetailed into their asks and what we can do with our capital projects moving forward.
Great, thank you. Marv?
Fortunately, I've been on the road for most of the time and I've missed so many.
You also engaged in some professional development.
Well, I did, yeah. I was in Colorado as a spouse of my wife who was attending a conference on educational service organizations. And it was, I, I attended several sessions that I thought were very, it was pretty general education and it focused in on a number of special needs kinds of students and it was very, very interesting, so.
Great, well, thank you. And welcome back, safe and sound. We appreciate that. Jolene?
Well, I had the honor and the privilege of traveling to New York City last week with nine of our district leaders, teachers, principals, administrators, and we had a fabulous time on Tuesday. Five of us attended a diversity and equity all-day conference and that was really quite valuable and quite enlightening. And then on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, the 10 of us visited 10, five to five, I lost it. I visited, how many did we visit?
Many.
Over 10 together.
Many.
No, it used to be over 10. This year it wasn't because we spent some time together this year. It was very interesting. But it's a spectacular learning opportunity for all of us, visiting unique programs in New York City. This year, we focused on restorative justice programs and also we looked at a program that introduces 7th graders to what college opportunities look like. And both of those were really good. I think that, that our folks have some great ideas of things that they can bring back to our district. But the restorative practices that we, we looked at, the students that we talked to and the educators we talked to were really quite enlightening and I think there, we've learned a lot that we can bring back and start to use here. So it was a fabulous experience. And thank you for letting us do that.
Thank you for taking the time. And I'm sure Dr. McGowan will speak further in his report, but to all that attended and all that have attended over the past few years, we've learned so much and so much has been brought back from those New York City trips and visiting those school systems or school buildings, so, and those connections with administrators and teachers that you all have made. So thank you for taking that. Well, a few things, I, you know, usual, I try to get to as many things as I can. I want to report out quickly, the Diversity Equity Committee, as Karen mentioned, with her Subcommittee. I'm pleased to serve on the Hiring Practices Subcommittee and we've met twice in the last month and a half. And we have, Dr. Renee Baker is our consultant out of RIT and she's just fantastic. And we are now, she created the framework for three subcommittees that we're breaking into right now, one on recruitment, one on retention and one on environment. So, you know, why would people come here? That's in the environment type approach, you know, creating the best possible environment to attract the teachers of color and teachers that are from diverse backgrounds. So we've all, we've begun that work, the sub-subcommittee work is now beginning and we're going to, I think, bring some more folks into that effort. So that, that's really great work and ongoing and the beauty of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee and the subcommittees this year, broad representation from our, not only our teaching staff, the board, but the community, much broader representation from the community that worked in the past. So that, that is all going well. Couple other quick things. I was able to attend the Be the Healing session on December 13th. Christina was there, a number of our administrators were there, fascinating work and we begin going through those notes and comments that were from that evening. Also, a number of us were at, it was back on November 26th, but one of the great things, our new family reception that was at the French Road Cafeteria, and I don't know how large it was gathering, but it's just a wonderful event where families new to the district are invited and many, many come, the entire family, and there's some food, but there's a number of the community providers are there that evening for the Recreation Department and the town, the school district, and that's just, just a great event. And then one other quick mention, because it's such a great thing, on December 7th, Pearl Harbor Day, members of the town recreation staff and the town staff continue to sponsor and hold a veterans luncheon at Brighton Town Park. Jolene was there, but Jolene and others from the Brighton, Brighton Your Wardrobe with some winter wear for folks and others support this event. And the luncheon has grown so large that I think they're going to have to look for a larger venue, but it's just, it started out as a small thing and now it encompasses many school people, town people, Parks and Rec people, people from the Veterans Outreach Center and the VA over there on Westfall Road. So just a great town event, a collaboration with, with everyone, so. All right, before Dr. McGowan gets to wrap up, so we'll send it over now to the BTA report and Beth.
Hi, how are you?
We're great.
Everybody's coughing a little bit, so.
We're all due for a break, right?
It is, it is coming and we're all ready. My report is a little short tonight, but we've been doing a lot. You've attended concerts and activities and I know the principal reports recorded out quite a bit. So there's not a lot, but I know that the teachers are doing wonderful work every day in classrooms and so sometimes they just get so caught up in that, it's tough to send a report. But a couple of things from French Road, Katie Covert, 4th grade teacher, she wanted to let everybody know that her class participated in donating pajamas and books to families in need and they participated with that through the Scholastic Books and Pajama Program this year. And so the kids really enjoyed doing that and packing things up, so they were really excited about that. And then a few teachers wanted me to share about our Acts of Kindness that we did during Red Ribbon Week. Ashley Ellis kind of spearheaded that. She's our behavior specialist at FRES. She's new to us this year. But we kept kindness chains in our classrooms and all across the school and she wanted, many teachers wanted me to share that there were 2,124 Acts of Kindness shared during Red Ribbon Week. The children continue to share their interests and they really find many opportunities to spread kindness and love while recognizing their ability to have empathy for others. The empathy piece, again, coming out of that Second Step Program that we're starting at French Road as well. So I think the kids are really connecting to that. We still have our kindness board up with, that picture was attached, that's right in our main hallway, and kids are always adding to the kindness pieces that they did, so that's really exciting. And then Vivian Lopez-French, she wanted to share from the middle school that their foreign, foreign language interns are doing a fabulous job at Brighton High School and TCMS. They have three interns, one from Columbia, one from Switzerland and one from Germany. And the students are learning so much about those cultures and the students are absolutely loving learning so much from both sides, in both cultures here in America and those that are being represented, so that's really great. And then Heather Gabriel, she wanted to share a really great assignment that Cassie Pruitt just completed with her English students. It's called Poetry Out Loud. And her students memorized and recited poetry of their choosing in front of judges and were rated, and were rated on their performance. And her 15 to 1 students were amazing and confident and did a wonderful job with her encouragement and teaching and despite being well out of their comfort zone to do memorized poetry out loud in front of a panel of judges, so that was really exciting. And then, I know that the principals had reported out on this, but this was a connection from Ari Emecusik. As part of their overcoming barriers through resilience unit, students were reading Gary Schmidt's novel, Okay for Now, and that was the story for an 8th grader who navigates dysfunction and finds inner strength through the Audubon art. Students went on a field trip to the Memorial Art Gallery during which they selected artwork that they felt told the story of resilience. And then as a final showcase of this experience, the 8th graders will act as docents of their art pieces during a special event at the Memorial Art Gallery this week. Students under the leadership of Kendra Lamb will also be playing music at that event as well. And then a huge shout out, I know that the custodial staff isn't always necessarily connected to the BTA, but again, Senior French wanted to give a shout out to Dave Luce and his crew. And even though they're not teachers, Dave is the head custodian at TCMS. And she wanted everyone to know how available Dave is at the drop of a hat, anytime, anywhere. Dave reads his emails very early in the morning and makes sure to have time to juggle all those crazy requests and make them happen fast. He has specifically helped her out at the very last minute so that instruction could continue seamlessly and teaching could take place in the auditorium. Dave makes things happen quickly, efficiently and always with a friendly and kind disposition. So a huge thank you to Dave Luce and his crew on behalf of the Foreign Language Department for always stepping up and helping out with a smile on their faces. So teachers are recognizing not only what teachers do, but what everybody does in a community, in a building. And the BTA just wants to extend health, happiness and peace to staff and community as we approach a nice break over in December and we're all looking forward to a fresh start in 2018.
Very much, we appreciate that. PTSA report, Leslie.
I have to second the Dave Luce shout out. He's always been so helpful to the PTSA for activity nights. He's great.
They do a great job.
So at the, at BHS, the BHS PTSA meeting with the principal this month dealt with the topic of vaping. Dr. Hall and Lance Mitchell talked about this very serious topic that is becoming an epidemic in schools across the country. A day and evening meeting was held. BHS celebrated their designation as a blue ribbon school on December 14th. The PTSA helped with blue Mardi Gras beads and phone cases that were given out to students and staff. The PTSA felt honored to be included in the celebration ceremony. The PTSA also held their staff appreciation luncheon on 12/14. It was a successful event that served 170 for lunch, lots of food and dessert, all donated by parents in the district. They decorated the cafeteria in blue and white to accent the blue ribbon theme and filled mugs with blue and white candy for the staff. This week, they have the Class of 2018 reunion. The PTSA will provide cookies and lunch for the high school's newest alumni as they reconnect. The PTSA at BHS has also been attending meetings for this year's Spring Fest. They are planning to supersize it this year in honor of the Blue Ribbon Designation. At TCMS, the PTSA's meeting with the principal this month dealt with technology in the classroom. Six teachers gave presentations on how they utilize tech in the classroom. Teacher presentations were extremely informative and demonstrated the different ways technology is being used in the 6th through 8th grade. The meeting was well attended. The next meeting will be a book club discussion. Parents are being asked to read one of two books, either The Teenage Brain or Untangled, both about the changes your teens go through during the middle school years. The next PTSA meeting with the principal will be a book club discussion on this topic. TCMS PTSA is also helping with another round of mock interviews for the 8th grade students who are taking home careers this quarter. It's a great experience for parents and for students. At French Road, the FRES PTSA's meeting with the principal this month had a presentation from Impactor about our district's effort to reduce waste in their building and throughout the district. PTSA held its first family game night at Barnes and Noble. The attendance was good and everyone had fun playing games. They are looking at dates to hold another one. The FRES PTSA also helped Dr. Rio with popcorn and storytime at FRES's Book, FRES Book Fair Family Night. It was a great night that was very well attended, as it usually is. There was a lot of positive feedback on PTSA's new book vendor, Folette. And at Council Rock, new this year, the Council Rock PTSA's Hospitality Chair got parents to sign up to provide snacks for the teachers to enjoy during their parent-teacher conferences. Also, Council Rock PTSA's Crayola recycling collection has started. There are many boxes set up around Council Rock where any dried out markers, not just Crayola, will be accepted and recycled. And there's now a push to do this in all of the buildings. And this artwork is fabulous. These fortune cookies are so, messages are wonderful.
We talk about it often, I don't think we can talk about it too often, but when we come in and the artwork changes behind us, when you come in the room and you notice it, it's just phenomenal and fantastic and it's all great, but you do, the fortune cookies do stand out. You can't. but you do, the fortune cookies do stand out, you can't, you have to come and visit the room if you're at home or later watching on the YouTube channel to fully appreciate, but...
The messages are great.
The other thing that's great about this is when we use this room for a public meeting, the Be the Healing meeting the other night, about 50 people, and you saw so many milling about prior to the meeting, seeing all the artwork and appreciating all the stuff that the students do, so we, again, thank our students and our teachers for making sure they get that all up and it gets changed over and we're able to show as much artwork as we can through the school year, so, thank you for bringing it up, we can see this is fantastic. We should turn it around, I have cameras on and I can see it during the... Anyway, Dr. McGowan, super-tennis report.
Thank you, I mean, you get a chance, if you see the fortunes on each of these, it's even better than the visual, it's the messages that kids created.
The French Road work is spectacular.
It's really, it's all great, yeah. Really great stuff. So, a few updates for you and comments too, I'll just start with echoing what the BTA and PTSA said around a happy and healthy holiday season for people who've been celebrating and will be celebrating, certainly, best wishes in the new year to everyone. Thanks to everyone who was able to be a part of Be the Healing, it was a great session the other evening and a lot of productive discussion that Marlo and I actually have been able to meet about, start to talk about, and we'll be sharing out in the community and talking about next steps in communicating that and showing action steps around the feedback that we were given through that session. Thanks to our Climate Club presenters tonight, a good reminder of the importance of leadership, particularly young leadership, and profound possibilities for the impact that they will be making. I read a great quote from George Karros, "The best way to ensure our students are the leaders of tomorrow is to give them the opportunity to lead today," and they certainly are demonstrating that to us tonight, so I thought they did a really, really great job. I loved Carolyn's presentation, that slide, if we keep thinking about equality versus equity, which is so important, because it means different for different people and us being responsive to that plays into all of these kinds of conversations. Larry mentioned the bid openings, we'll have that after the new year, we continue to make great progress, we're looking forward to the next steps in the project as well. We will also, Larry mentioned about this, and I thought you said it really nicely there around the fact that it will be disruptive and challenging over the next several years, but it should be noted too, we're going to keep going back out to constituent groups, so, staff, community to say, how are we doing and what more can we do to make it more palatable for you also, just to continuously try and get feedback on how to make the process as smooth as possible, so. And as you said, we'll end up, at the end of it, with pretty incredible updates to our learning environments, but it'll be a challenge for everybody as we, as we work on that. Just following up on Juline's comment, I can't tell you how much we appreciate that learning opportunity and the support for that learning opportunity, we've seen 45 to 50 schools over the last five years, there were seven schools this year, and Julie, I had to, yeah, because we went in different places.
It all runs together.
We split into two groups, and so, you know, from Bronx Community College, where we saw programs for middle schoolers thinking about college and being exposed to that conversation, to a school, really taking care of every comprehensive need for kids, to schools really focused on restorative practices and helping us learn more about that, to see it in action, and then to interact with educators and frankly, more importantly, interact with kids engaged in that work was just profoundly impactful. And the team is a, you know, a group of people from all over the district doing different things who will bring back ideas and are inspired by the work, so, really, really excited about that. Hats off to the high school, Dr. Hall, we celebrated the Blue Ribbon, of course, we've talked about that a couple of different times, it was a great celebration and we appreciate that as well. And I thought the conversation that Tula mentioned tonight, with the group that has been put together at the high school, kids feeling really comfortable expressing how to create more equity for them is an important one, it's not always easy to hear that, but it's really, really important to hear that and to work through that with our kids and find ways to be as supportive as we can, which is what our goal is, so thanks for opening up that dialogue as well. Any questions for me?
For them to have that opportunity to share that with each other is an important thing, so, thanks, Tom, for facilitating that. One other quick thing I would add on the Blue Ribbon Ceremony, if members of the community want to, that entire ceremony is available through our YouTube channel for viewing. I would stress, go and view the four different essays from the four students, Tula mentioned it, I think it was also mentioned by somebody else, they are all, they were different, they were unique, they were impactful, they were important, and each in their own way, and that, that was the highlight, I mean, okay, Tom getting the big plaque and a medallion, I think that was cool, but, I mean, those four essays that they read were really something, I thought, and you can, you know, at your own leisure, go and then view those online, so, thank you. Thank you for your report, Dr. McGowan.
My pleasure.
All right, a few other items of business remain this evening, folks, maybe we have a motion to approve the professional services contracts around our facilities improvement plan, testing services, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry, seconded by Karen, we've had this, you've read it, it's pretty, pretty automatic, it's to approve that contract for the testing services required around the project, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. We have four bids this evening, I will ask for a motion for approval of all four bids, A, B, C, and D, and the reason I say that, I'm comfortable with approving them all together, they're all four cooperative bids through the BOSI's service, one for food, service, equipment, repair, and maintenance, one for school lunch paper and plastic, one for medical trainer supplies, and another for health and safety supplies. I think it's appropriate that they can be approved together, a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Christina, and again, we mentioned they are, through the purchasing department at BOSI's too, they're cooperative bids, which help guarantee us the lowest possible acceptable bids. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. A motion, please, for approval of our non-resident tuition rates for the 2018-2019 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Andrea, and seconded by Larry, again, this was given to us previously by Lou, and it sets the tuition rates for non-resident students where they need to be to align with the remaining parts of regulation and law, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then our consent agenda this evening, a motion, please, to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Juline, seconded by Marv, a number of items in the consent agenda, I will make note of three gifts from members of the community, two from, one from, a very generous gift of $1,000 to the Brighton High School Music Department from Heidi and John Varrassi, we appreciate that and thank them for their generosity. A gift from the Brighton Education Fund, in the amount of $200 to cover the cost of having a piece of music composed and arranged for the 4th grade chorus, and also a gift from Verizon, and actually, this is interesting, I think if you read the material...
It was interesting.
It's a gift from Verizon, the amount of $750 from their grant program to the girls softball program, but one of the parents of softball players, an employee of Verizon, and they have a system that if you accumulate so many points in a system, charity of your choice or a nonprofit of your choice is eligible for grants, and so they were awarded, and he did that for our softball brothers, we thank him for that also. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Prior to adjournment, I will check, board members, any other items of business this evening? Nothing that we won't keep till January 8th? Dr. McGowan, anything further?
No, sir.
As has been expressed a number of times from the Board of Education, our best wishes for safe and healthy break, holiday season into our new year, and we next meet in this room on January 8th, 2019, and that's going to be difficult to say, right? A motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Andrea, and seconded by Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, everyone, thank you very much.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.